Good morning. It's Tuesday, September 3rd, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 27th meeting.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion, changes? Roll call, please. Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
All right. Open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing them, go ahead and proceed. County Engineers Office, Dan Becker.
Morning.
Good morning.
Let's see what we've got. I've got two resolutions for consideration today. The first is approving the final plat for the Viola Rose Estate subdivision in Liverpool Township. And the second is approving the annual assessments for that same subdivision. And then our weekly permits.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Jeremy Cinco, Senator Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with HDR for professional design services for the Westfield Water Treatment Plant Project. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to apply for 2025 grant monies available for the replacement and repair of failing septic systems through the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Funds.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes today, we have four rate increases, one in sanitary, one at county home, and two at job and family services. Four promotions, one in sanitary, and three in maintenance, and one leave of absence in maintenance.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good, all right. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for you today. These are pretty speedy ones. Our first is expenditure adjustments for various funds. First chunk is just some payroll adjustments for grants. The second chunk is for the sheriff's new video wall. Our second resolution is revenue adjustments. We had some things that DTF needed to have changed around for their accounting. Our third resolution is transfer of inventory between the various offices, movement of a printer from sanitary over to the prosecutor's office. Our fourth resolution is our excess property. Most of this coming from the Board of Developmental Disabilities this time. Our fifth resolution is expenses of county officials. We don't have anybody going out of state this time. And our sixth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,034,577.11.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Brett. Next, we have Chris Jacob, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for you this morning. The first approves a sub-grant agreement to, with the Medina County Park District, to improve the Wolf Creek Park by restoring the area and protecting the integrity of the sewer line, alleviate flooding, and conserve drinking water at that park. The amount of that sub-grant is $400,000. Next resolution authorizes a change order for the Medina County Veteran Services Building Project. This change order amount is $23,394.03 and represents combined total costs for landscape wall, engineering stamp that was required for the awnings, additional electrical outlets, cabinet locks, and electronic door opener. And we are still on schedule for completion of that project on September 27th. That should be the final change order, although I'm reluctant to say that, but...
Let's hope.
Hopefully, that's it. And the final resolution this morning authorizes the purchase of refreshments and beverages for Leadership Medina County Government Expo Day on November 13th, 2024, in the amount of $250.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
I'm glad we're gonna get the part, our dollars, get that sub-grant moving forward, so that's...
Yep, very good. Roll call, please.
Waiting.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes, I will abstain on the third one as I'm on the leadership of Medina County Board of Directors. And, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
And then Department Updates, Denise Testa.
Good morning. Breathing heavy. Okay, good morning. So, as you know, we have our September meeting this week. Erin is attending, I understand. So, we also, for September, we did receive a concept plan, so, from Montville. So, we're very excited to review that plant subdivision. For October, today is our deadline, and we currently do not have any agenda items yet. So, we're, we are staying open till 4:30 if anyone would like to submit. We're always happy to submit. We did meet and are continuing to meet regarding the developers' agreement. So, we were able to review about half of that document last week, and I believe we're scheduled to review the remainder of the document in next week.
Good.
So, that is coming along well. We also will be reviewing our draft meeting schedules for Concept and Planning Commission as well. For CHIP, for Community Housing Improvement Program and the Lead Safe Ohio Program, due to the increased number of applications and income-eligible projects, all new applicants will be placed on a waitlist. So, we have over 100 applicants, which is quite, quite a list. Applicants on the waitlist may be reviewed if grant funds become available. So, we are still accepting applications, but they are placed on a waitlist. They are reviewing or assessing locations for CHIP and LSO simultaneously. So, when they go out to a home, if the home is built before 1978, it is presumed there are, there is lead there. So, they are able to kind of complete those assessments under LSO and CHIP simultaneously, and they're continuing to... Again, we have 19 projects or locations right now. So, that money's gonna go through pretty, pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And then, also, let's see, there's one more item I wanted to... Oh, I wanted to thank the County Auditor's Office and John in particular. As you saw on the excess property, our plotter took an unfortunate dive this month, and the auditor has an extra plotter on our floor. So, we don't even have to go up a floor. And they have agreed to allow us to, to use it at no, no cost other than parts and service. So, I really appreciate your help with that, John. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I would like to, when you get a chance, see the letter that we're gonna send out for the excellent.
Yes. I would, for the fair, for the fair proposal. Absolutely.
Thursday already, I'm so excited.
I know. It's coming up. I will get that to you, though.
Super.
And you want that to be from you, correct? Or you just wanna see it?
Well, it can be from you, but I'd like to review it before it goes up because they're sending them to your department.
Okay, gotcha. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Next, OSU Extension.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sierra Baca. I'm the 4H educator for Medina County 4H. I have updates for a couple of our departments in our office today. So, for 4H, our junior fair went very well, and all the kids did very well, had a successful 2024 year. Right after fair, we officially hired our new program assistant, so Brittany Robinson started last week. And today, she's in Columbus, so she would've been here to meet you all today. While our 2024 club programming is winding down for the year, we are kicking up with our school programming, and we've already gotten to a couple of classrooms, so we're excited for that. With Family and Consumer Sciences, Erin, she's continuing to offer Strong Couples Project, an online relationship education program. The busy season with food preservation is kicking off, and she offers canner tests at our class for $5, canner pressure tests. She finished Money 101 Series with Oasis of Hope and is offering Peacefully Parenting Series at our office monthly. And then finally, we also gave an invitation for our Ag Day. We will be partnering with Wadsworth again. September 27th, we have our stations on there. And then, we are hopeful that you guys will be able to attend. Thank you, guys.
So, you have drones on the list?
Yeah, so we'll have a big agriculture drone. It's huge.
And it's gonna be at your site.
Yeah, it's coming to the fairgrounds.
Oh, fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds. Yes.
At the fairgrounds.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks.
I was, Brittany has a long tradition in Medina County 4H, so I bet that's gonna be a good, a good hire. I'm excited about that.
Yeah, she hit the ground running, so that's really good.
That's good. That's no surprise for those who know her, yeah.
Great, very good. Thank you so much, all right. Next, open for public comment. Yes, please come forward, if you wouldn't mind. Name and address, if you would, please.
Thank you. My name is Wendy McKee. I live in Wayne County. I'm Sherwood Colibard, and I've been a resident of Ohio for my entire life. We are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans. We're not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. We come as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by highly credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they don't add up. Just like your bank account must balance, so much our votes. If you had $10,000 fewer than you had deposited, you would certainly wanna know what happened. If a company had a significant discrepancy in its books, the company would most certainly conduct an audit. Yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election using only official data provided by state elections officials so, show that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate won over another or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certifiable election shows that the votes as counted were not all valid and accurate under the law. Today, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections along with the summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have questions, we can, that we are not able to answer now, we can commit to getting you the answer in writing from the United Sovereign Americans Executive Team promptly. This data in our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you make it clear that these issues must be taken seriously. Today, we have, we come to you as elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. I will now read the resolution. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of this franchise." End quote. Reynolds versus Sims 377, U.S. 533, 1964. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law." In Raycoy 127, U.S. 731, 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14 Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the vote, number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one and 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act, 2002. Whereas, an open source audit of the Ohio 22 general election conducted by Ohio state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracy that violate, violate both federal and state laws, including 1,046,431 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Ohio State Voter Roll Database. That's 1,046,431. 602,631 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants. That's 602,631. 1,162,079 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election at the time of certification. No one knows who cast them. That's 1,162,079. 713,262 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Ohio was 34. That was 713,262. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
So, you're just gonna read the resolution and take terms?
That was the first part of it. I'm finishing the resolution.
Okay, and you are?
I'm Susan Sonnet, and I've lived in Wayne County in Ohio for almost 40 years.
Okay.
Continuing the resolution, whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report specific selections, absence of selections, made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens. A fraud ab initio. United States v. Throckmorton, 98, U.S. 61, 1878. Quote, "From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates." End quote. United States v. Classic, 313, U.S. 299, 1941. Whereas, Ohio's general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law as follows. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Six, ballots regarding the, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a NIST-compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all their paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of all unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand count and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of people is accurately recorded.
And if you could please, for the record, give me your, your name and your...
My name is Doreen Miller. I live in Wayne County, and I've been a resident of Ohio my entire life.
Okay, thank you.
You've just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in the 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the bank account is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most important vitally right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing to not fix the problem? The cost is immeasurable. So, I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiative nationwide has some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in Ohio as well as other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That is unite, the number four, freedom.com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. One more time, uniteforfreedom.com with the number four. What you heard is a culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams, from data teams from Ohio and throughout the nation. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large number of Americans, including many right here in Ohio, have questions about the worthiness, the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish that was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives is legally valid. And legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. The right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half century by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You on this board today have the chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens you represent that you value it also by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. We appreciate your time and attention. This is the official resolution. We are asking you... Has complete appendix here with all of the...
I think they gave it to us.
This is the official one, the colored one.
Oh.
So, this is the one that...
We'll give that the color, okay.
Yes.
Let me ask you, do, since you're all three from Wayne County, have the Wayne County Commissioners been approached? And have they taken, taken action on the resolution?
We're seeing them on the 19th.
Okay, all right. Have you talked to anyone on the Board of Elections of Wayne County or Medina County regarding your concerns?
We have talked to Wayne County.
Okay, but you haven't talked to anybody Medina County?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, we'll now open up into discussion session. Chris? All right, Matt, anything? Brandon, anything? Okay. Colleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask John while we were here, how are we doing about being in compliance of all our employees watching the video? Are we close?
Not too bad.
Okay.
Actually. September 3rd is better than I thought.
Okay. Cause now that we're September 3rd, I know the deadlines in September, I just want to make sure we're close.
Yeah, I had Cynthia from Payroll, reach out to all the payroll clerks to help move the process along for those that are not complying yet.
Great.
So...
Anything? Erin?
I'm sure more appropriate acknowledgement will be forthcoming, but was this Chris's final meeting as the County Administrator?
I didn't know.
I guess with that official title.
Yeah, there was the article in the paper, but just to, to give it some acknowledgement at the meeting, you know, we're happy with the, the plan we've got in place, but Chris is gonna be missed, too. Not that he's going anywhere anytime soon, or so I'm told.
We have a lot of special projects.
Yeah.
Seems like we get increasing numbers of special projects every day.
Yeah.
So, okay, all right. Anything else?
Actually, we did, we completed a visit down to Ashland County.
Oh, yeah, how'd that go?
Actually, we, it's a very impressive facility that they've got there for a capacity that I think, I speak for everybody who I say, I can only hope we would never need in Medina County. It's a, I think their facility houses up to, I think, 75 or 80 dogs.
Did you take some pictures?
Yeah, and the way it's built and laid out and everything is impressive, and I appreciated their, their time in showing us through. I think there's a lot of things we can, we can build on, but also, you know, as I looked around, I thought, hopefully, we would never even dream of needing a place that big.
But they received a large gift, philanthropy to, to help to pay for that.
They have three different organizations, too, that help, help fund them. Private organizations that help fund over and above that. And I think as you, between looking at their facility and looking at Wayne County, it seems as you go south of here, as you go south of here, there are, I think they have a different issue with, with stray dogs than what we have in Medina County.
Right.
And I think it's probably a testament to, you know, the, the people who are here and kind of the, the community that we have, and also probably just certain dynamics that you run into.
Certainly more urbanized than Ashland County or Wayne County.
And I don't think we have as many breeding operations up here that they deal with, and so, so they have different, they have different challenges there, too. But in terms of what the facility looks like and what it does, it, yeah, gives us a lot to kind of consider as we take the next steps on, and, and I do think your point about the private donations and funding they got, that's gonna be the next, the next big question, probably, is where, where the money's going to come from to build something that looks like that. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a plan, but it's also gonna take a lot of participation from a lot of different places in the community. I think there's support there, though, too, so that's the encouraging part, so.
We can help cultivate that, it'd be all the better for us.
Yeah, but it's.
Us and the dogs.
And, and you also realize that, not that you didn't realize it before you make the trip, but the need for the update and the upgrades are certainly there when you compare it to the facility that we have now, so.
Very good. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, and I've, I've got nothing to add other, we are, we'll be doing recess. We have a deliberation session later at 11 o'clock to provide, as the law provides us to deliberate over the annexation hearing we had, had last week, and then we'll be adjourning for the day after that deliberation with the, I think with the county prosecutor will be coming over, I think it's 11 o'clock, if I recall correctly, so.
I thought it was 10:30.
Is it 10:30?
I thought.
I don't have it on the schedule.
I had it 10:30.
But it's, it's, because it's, we're meeting with council, and.
That's right, we're meeting with council.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a software glitch this, this, this weekend where I had no access to my calendar, so I was kinda guessing. I know I had to be here, that was about it, so that'll get fixed.
None of the glitches are me. I'm nuts.
Never mind, okay. After that, we'll go ahead and recess, thank you all, and everybody have a good week. Enjoy the fall weather.
Kelly, you're a resident glitch.
Oh, thank you.